Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 19th, 2022 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and we'll try to give them due time. And first up on the agenda, we have a budget amendment to appropriate additional funds for fuel and emergency repairs at the Marina. And Director Jana Potvin will give us the presentation. Good afternoon, Jana.
Okay. We'll start with the fuel. What I've asked is to transfer $20,000 to cover shortfalls in gasoline as well as repairs and maintenance from surplus into our expense account. The fuel budget, as you're aware, has not kept up with inflation. For the past three years, we've been budgeting about $18,000 a year. At the end of fiscal year '22, I had to come forth and ask for additional funds. And I'm looking to be a little more proactive this year. We've already spent $11,000 of that $18,000 and would like to have an additional $10,000 to make sure that we do not need a budget amendment at the last minute. The additional $10,000 that I'm requesting to go to our maintenance account is to address a repair that was needed about a month ago. Well, about a month ago now. We had a water main break on the private side, and it required us to get a contractor out to do that repair. The estimate, well, the actual cost of that repair was just over $6,000, but we're also going to have to do some sidewalk and some other landscaping repairs for an additional $10,000. If the funding, if the costs are actually put in the sidewalk exceeds that, we do have some money available in our revenue and expense, revenue account, or sorry, in our repair and maintenance account. I don't believe that it will. And if that money, the cost comes in below that, it is money that we will not spend on anything that isn't needed.
Questions or comments from the council? So you're fairly confident that this recovers through the balance? That's what you said.
The $10,000 for the fuel?
Yep.
I'm hopeful that it will, yes.
Okay.
It, that will, we have not needed more than that, and fuel does not seem to be on the rise, the fuel cost, so yes, I'm as comfortable as I can be in September.
Okay.
Is the sidewalk, is that with our current contractor?
Um, yes, we have, we've got, yeah.
Okay.
For the benefit of the council, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I can. For the benefit of the council, I mean, the good news and the bad news here is that when expenses rise, there's revenue associated with it for fuel. It's just a, you know, budgeting challenge, particularly with, you know, significantly fluctuating fuel prices. But the other piece of good news here is that, you know, we remain the consistent, the only consistent destination for getting fuel on the Wycomico River. You know, the Yacht Club has had their fuel pumps go down at times, you know, not that we want that to happen, but that level of consistency is something that, you know, we want to, we want to be able to maintain the operations. And so I think that's just a point for why this is a really important move.
Do we adjust our cost, by the way? When the, when the gas cost goes up? No.
Oh, oh, what, yes, for the, for the, the fee that we charge, yes. The, that rate does go up. And also with the fees is an additional 50 cents in revenue per gallon that gets added to that cost. So yes, but, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Move it forward? Yep?
Yes.
Philly will move that forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jana. Appreciate it. Next up, let's see, Ron Strickler is not here yet, so Rick will go to you. This is in regards to a resolution to execute a quit claim, quick, quit claim deed in respect to Victoria Park Drive. Rick Boland will lead us through it.
Thank you. So Jason Malone, JM's Holdings, is completing the development of Sassafras Meadows, originally started by Tom Ruhark. And it was designed in phases. Between Phase Two and Phase Three, where his work is getting ready to move forward, there was a temporary cul-de-sac. So this quit claim deed would transfer that cul-de-sac to Jason Malone, allowing him to basically take it out. And then it will be made a complete street to go through to West Street, at which time it would be transferred back to the city.
Information is in the packet, so is there any questions?
So you're saying that that little cul-de-sac back there, the rest of that property goes back by Victoria of Sassafras will be developed as well?
Yes. Uh, once, one?
There are no happy campers. I said, they're not going to be happy campers back there. I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
Private property.
Yeah. That I tried to explain to them.
You mean Victoria?
Yeah, Victoria, Sassafras.
They still have a nice amount of property and screening between themselves and the development?
Okay, so you're talking about that field that is, once you go around that bend and go back that field? Or you're talking about the field to the left? See, it's a field beside them and like kind of behind them.
Yes. It will be, if you were in Sassafras too, where the homes are currently, looking at the cul-de-sac, going next to Victoria will be a road. Going on the backside will be single-family homes.
Yeah.
To the right of that road will be townhouses. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Because I have to know, because you know, they're going to ask me.
Oh, I know.
They're going to call.
Oh, I know, I know.
Off the hook. We've already had some conversation about it, so I just want to be clear, because, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm an older, and Jack is an older elder, we're both elders. But wait a minute, what I'm trying to say is, you know, they like their privacy and they, you know, they want their privacy, and I understand redevelopment comes, so they can have everything that we want, so.
Maybe the competition will drive the costs of the units down.
Down, yeah.
Because competition is good.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if there are no other questions, so we have agreement to move forward? Okay. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. You want to take care of the other one while you're here, and then we'll, then we'll call on Ron?
So that's up to you.
Yeah, come on. We'll go through that one and then. Next is a budget amendment for addition, of additional funds to construct streetscaping division. And Rick?
So the streetscaping has several different names. One is circle and division. That's how it's funded in the bond pool. Streetscaping or town square. And this is mainly funding to, for the town square, so that we can get it out for bid. The original funding was about 1.7 million. In the 23 CIP, there's another $900,000. This amendment is to move another 533,000, some of which is money that we did not spend on Main Street due to the type of contracting used. And a portion of it is from the urban greenway, which is intended to bring people to open in green spaces. And since that's what town square is intended to be, that's how it was viewed to be an appropriate use of those funds. This would bring us to $3.2 million in construction costs. Those are our estimates. We've been through value engineering. We've looked at other ways of addressing this project. The direction and staff position is that is the appropriate way to proceed. So to get this out for bid, we've been instructed to make sure that we have enough money to be able to proceed. That's the basis of the request.
For the benefit of the public, could you explain a little bit about where Town Square is going to be for those who don't know?
So it's the top portion of Lot One, directly across from the parking deck. It would be from where we've stopped with Phase One now, which are the pavers for the food trucks. And it would go down to the canopy for the gateway building.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Well, I think some of that funding is, you know, just shows the great financial management we've had in the past on other projects, that we can use that money for appropriate things today, so.
Yep, I agree.
Ken, I'll just offer a little credit to, to the Eastern Shore delegation and Governor Hogan for more than a million dollars that has also gone toward that project. A million dollars there, plus a million dollars toward Main Street, and the savings of which we've benefited from.
Yep, definitely. Thanks to them. And it's always good so to see some of that money, some of our state taxes coming back to the Eastern Shore of Maryland.
Amen.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Next, we have Ron Strickler. This is an ordinance to accept grant funds for the homeless case specialist position.
Hi, Ron, how are you?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Been a little bit of time since I've been at this table.
Yes.
Is that a good thing? Yeah, so this is, this ordinance is to accept the funds for the community, community block grant for mental health services from the Wycomico County Local Behavioral Health Authority. We had some funding in FY21 that supported the case specialist, Joan Harris, who was hired in mid-August. So she's been with us for about five weeks now. Moving into FY22, the funds have to transfer from a different account for this next year. So you see in the, this amount of $45,224 to support Joan's position with a small percentage coming out of city funds for benefits. Joan primarily will be based out of the Ann Street Village site, working with those individuals to transfer, transition them into permanent supportive housing. So that's going to be her main role in this, in this venture.
Wonderful.
That's fantastic. By the way, the, it looks great.
Yeah.
I went over there when they were carrying those pieces out, and I'm like, oh, jeez.
It's amazing how quickly they put that, you know, I think there was probably about 16 hours total, you know, and then the interior work they needed to complete, but they had almost all the units up in one day. So they showed us how to remove and add and what to do and what not to do if we ever need to move any of them from the site.
Fantastic. So, and the work that was done on the, on the fence was amazing. Went over by it in the morning, and then afternoon, it was all closed in.
Yeah, a lot of community support. I think we had over, I think it was about 64 community volunteers showed up, so.
Fantastic.
The city of Salisbury definitely showed out for us, so.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Fantastic. And we're still shooting for a target date of end of October?
Yeah, right now, we are, we're supposed to receive the bathroom shower unit in early October, and with the expectation that all the hookups for electricity, water, sewer will be complete by the end of October. If everything remains on the path that we hope it does, you know, we're making sure, I think they're going to get in there and get some of the electricity work done here shortly. I know if you've seen the site, the houses are sitting kind of close together right now, but the reason we did that is for the trenching for the electricity behind the units, so they will move back, and there'll be that full 10 feet of space between the units in the front, so they have a place to walk out into. So lots, lots of moving parts, but we're getting there.
Fantastic. Wish you the best on the balance. Questions or comments from Ron?
No, it's a fantastic project. It's fantastic.
Been a long time in the works.
That's true.
It's great. Then we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Tell everybody thank you, please.
Will do.
The last item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Ethics for the proposed of incorporating amendments enacted by the Maryland General Assembly. I will tell everyone that we have received this document, which is pretty complete, and Ms. Boucher, our counsel, will give us the highlights of that and tell us the significant changes to the amendment. Thank you.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Before I get into that, let me just kind of go through a little recap of procedure and history. So it's my understanding, based upon my discussions with Ms. Nichols, that in 2012, you amended substantially your ethics code. And that was pursuant to a change in the law. All municipalities, governments, like cities, towns, even counties, were supposed to amend their ethics code to conform with state standards. And that's what this council did back in 2012, and it was approved by the State Ethics Commission at that time. So there has been another push for that yet again that happened this year in 2022. There were some minor changes to the state ethics law, and I'll get to that in just a second. And all municipalities were again asked to rework their code to, again, conform with state standards. So Ms. Nichols received an email from the State Ethics Commission the end of August, notifying us of the changes to the state law and asking us to put them in effect, which is how this matter came before us. The state has two model codes, one for small municipalities, one for large municipalities. I reviewed them and found that the one for smaller municipalities was just fine for the city of Salisbury, and that is what we basically used as our template. I shared that model code with our local city ethics commission. They met last Wednesday to review it, had some meaningful discussion. They wanted to change two small points, not of substance, but sometimes lawyers are good about being a little wordy and maybe making things a little more complicated than they needed to be. And we decided that there was maybe a better plain English way to say it. So those are the two changes that I made at their request. In the meantime, before that meeting, because I was under the impression that we were, we should have this done by October the 1st, that's what the email indicated, so I went ahead and contacted the State Ethics Commission and gave them our proposed code. He then informed me, the general counsel for the State Ethics Commission, that they were a little backed up and that we would not hear from the State Ethics Commission until the meeting of November the 17th. So he told us to proceed forward simply because we were using the model code and that he would double back to me when he had a minute. I received an email from him on Friday saying that he's reviewed it himself, found no issues, and that he doesn't foresee any issues before the State Ethics Board, which again will be presented in November of, November 17th. So that's how we are here. Each year, the city, by October the 1st, has to file a certification with the State Ethics Commission, saying that we are in compliance with state ethics law, identifying who the members of our local ethics commissions are, any amendments. And I will do that and note that we are in the process of amending our code, which is, you know, will be done officially once we receive the state approval come November. Okay. So procedurally, that's how we are here. The primary change, as I see it, is really to add prevention of the use of retaliation tactics. If someone were to file a complaint, that to me is the biggest change that I noticed. And it involves just kind of tidying up lobbying, gifts, disclosure, financial leadership, business entity disclosures. But it really is not a huge material change from what you have in place at this time. And I, we thought it was easier just to make it clean and repeal the old ethics code and replace it with this new code instead of trying to find the small changes. But I'm here to answer any questions that you have on it.
Great. We received this in our packet, and it's a pretty significant document. Questions on, on any of it?
No, I mean, it was, it's pretty clear. Did a good job on that.
I had a couple of questions, one you've already answered, I believe, and that's, are we under a deadline?
Uh huh.
And it seems like we're not going to have an issue with that.
Correct.
The second, will that, based on your discussion about financial disclosure, I'm assuming then we're going to have to make some minor changes to our financial disclosure statement?
Yes, and I'm in the process of working on that as well.
Perfect. And that has to be done at the same time or prior to the submittal of this, or no?
They do not, they're not concerned with our forms, so long as the forms track the new code.
Gotcha. Okay. Good.
And I failed to mention that your local ethics commission approved it unanimously.
Okay.
And I think that they were entertaining the idea of maybe having some type of public session on just the ethics code for if the public, just, you know, educational informative session, something that they were discussing, which I don't think, I think is actually a pretty good idea.
So if we put like a short presentation prior to one of the meetings, would that be?
I think that's an excellent idea.
You know, a 15-minute, 10, 15-minute presentation, I think, would help not just us, but also the people.
About 10.
Okay. You agree?
Yeah.
Okay, if we can, you just got some work to do.
Yeah.
We have, so we need, we don't need to take any action this next meeting, correct? Or should we?
I, I mean, we're already on the agenda to do so. I think we're fine moving forward.
Oh, fine. Okay. Good. All right. And we'll move that forward very quickly because it's on the agenda for the special meeting. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's finish up the, with the administration comments and then council comments. And I will ask if anybody has any comments relative to the items on this agenda and would like to speak, please identify yourself. We have anybody on the, on the screen? No? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to thank the council members who were able to come out for the community build this weekend. This is a, obviously a community lift, and as I think, I've gotten into the habit of saying, you know, when government steps up and does the right thing, that's still not sufficient to complete the work. It's got to be a community, there's got to be community buy-in. And so I really appreciate the 60-some individuals, as Ron, as Mr. Strickler indicated, that came out and volunteered, as well as our staff, but thank you to council as well. I was away on duty in Annapolis, so I didn't get to see who was there, but I know I saw pictures from Michelle, pictures from your, so thank you and appreciate you all for, for coming out. And lastly, I just want to say that it won't be the last opportunity. There will be more work that needs to happen out there. We've got painting for sure that's got to happen, and I'm sure there are some landscaping and other things.
Landscaping.
So, so Ron, stick around, we're going to talk about some of that afterward. But thank you again to council for all your support of this, the Ann Street Village project, and again, for the community lift. Just want to say how much I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boda?
Yes, really looks great out there. A lot of work that's been done, like you said, a lot more that needs to be, needs to be done. I stopped by for about 20 minutes and was, was watching everybody. We were walking through the, the units, and it's, it's neat. And so it's, it's worked in other areas, and I, and I think this is going to be great for those who are struggling with that. I do want to bring up, you know, something everybody should think about is make sure that we keep, try to work to keep your dogs on a leash. We've had some people who've had their animals attacked and hurt. I know it's happened to my family, and so just, you know, and also when the dogs are running around, sometimes they're, they're not safe, and they're subject to being struck by vehicles as well. So that's something we have to be cognizant about. And also, when your dogs are out, make sure you pick up their doo-doo. It's not nice when they're, when you walk out to your car and, got to clean my shoe. So, so anyway, so that's just something for everyone to consider, being out, talking to people this weekend. It's been great, and so looking forward to more of that, and some great weather, too.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I apologize for not being there this weekend, but I've been under the weather, plus my mother's still sick, so that's one reason why I haven't been there. The doctor shut me down this weekend for a minute. But I do want to say that, you know, I concur with you. I've had a couple of constituents call me in reference to the dogs, and also in reference to the dog, them, in this downtown area where they are paying, you know, money, I mean, but wherever you live, you shouldn't have to walk out your door. And the first thing you see or you step in is, you know, I'm not even going to go there, but you shouldn't have to deal with that. It's kind of horrible. I mean, I've had several people hit me within this weekend in reference to that. Also, I forgot what I was getting ready to say. See, that's what happens when you get.
I wouldn't know.
I know, Jackie wouldn't, would you? But I just had the time, and I asked that you keep, you continue to pray for my mother.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
Just as always, if you're healthy enough, please don't eat blood.
Sure.
Just want to say that Ann Street was looking amazing. So many people showed up. I was, I was just really amazed and in awe of how many folks in the community came out to show support and, and help out those who need help. So that was really nice. Also, boost, new boosters are available, so go get your booster. Can't wait to get mine.
And you can register with Wycomico County on the internet Monday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, I believe? I think Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they have the times listed that you can go. So do that. As I always second Angela, the blood supply still is not where it should be. So if you're capable, please give blood. And relative to the Ann Street project, I went over when they were cutting the straps of the pallets with the sides on them, and with a young gentleman who I didn't, I forget his name, Bud, short guy? Anyway, nice guy. And we were talking, and they were, they were taking the pieces and putting them down in the spots before, before assembly. And when I got there, it was just the two of us, plus the workers. And I was there for about 25, 30 minutes. And when they were pretty much finished putting everything down, I looked around, and there had to be 30 people from the neighborhood who were standing on the sidewalk, looking at it and, and nodding their heads. So it's a great thing that, that's being accomplished. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it's difficult to look for a job when you have to worry about where you're going to bed at night and what you're going to eat. And this is one of those transition areas where we can take care of their needs so that they have the ability to get counseling and help to find jobs. So it's a great thing.
Someone that can jack out to you.
Sure. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I want to ask the parents of the kids who are riding those bird scooters, the underage children who are riding them. Parents, please, make sure that you're not giving your kids permission, you're not letting them use your cards or whatever to get these scooters. I've seen kids on these scooters as, as early as six years old, riding these scooters with, and it's, I'm so afraid. There was an accident, I think, the other week on First Street in that area where someone was hit. Then there was someone on, is it Alleney Avenue, where there was a fatality. Parents, pay attention to what your children are doing. They have no business being on those bird scooters if they're under the age of 18. So if you're giving your children permission to ride these scooters, you're setting a trap for your children. And I pray that you'll be able to handle the consequences. I ask you to please, please, mind your kids and mind, and pay attention to what they're doing. That's all I have to say, because it is really scary when I see these kids on these scooters. It's, it's too much for me. It's, it's hurtful because sooner or later, somebody's going to get hit, and they're on it late at night. So, parents, it's all up to you, or whoever's getting rid of these scooters for these children, this blood will be on your hands.
Thank you, April. Well said. That concludes the work session items, and I will now call the special meeting of the And I will now call the special meeting of the Salisbury City Council on August 19th, 2022, to order. I'll entertain a motion to, and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson? This is Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2740 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Ms. Boucher, good afternoon.
Ordinance number 2740, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the general capital projects fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for construction of the street scaping division circle project. Where, can you hear me? Okay. Whereas the city identified downtown street scaping as a key capital and infrastructure improvement, and whereas the town square is envisioned as an open outdoor community space that invites people to walk, and whereas construction costs have continued to increase, and whereas Main Street master plan improvements were completed with funds available, and whereas urban greenway objectives include encouraging walking and inviting people to enjoy neighboring destinations, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, Section 1, the city of Salisbury's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Decrease revenue for account description debt proceeds, project description, Main Street Master Plan, account number 9801946931348022, in the amount of $135,000. Decrease expense for account description construction, project description, Main Street Master Plan, account number 9811951302648022, by that same amount, which is $135,000. Decrease revenue for account description debt proceeds, project description, urban greenway phase 2, account number 9801946931348048, in the amount of $398,859.64. Decrease expense for account description construction, project description, urban greenway phase 2, account number 9811951302648048, in the same amount of $398,859.64. And then increase revenue for the account description of debt proceeds, project description, street scaping division circle, account number 9801946931348043, in the amount of $533,859.64. And then increase expense for account description construction, project description, street scaping division circle, account number 9811951302648043, by that same amount, which is $533,859.64.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2740 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2740 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2741 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson? Mrs. Gregory? Ms. Boucher?
Ordinance number 2741, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Ethics for the purpose of incorporating amendments enacted by the Maryland General Assembly. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city of Salisbury municipal code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council of the city of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 as amended to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council may amend Title 2 of the city code pursuant to the authority granted in Section SC215 of the Salisbury City Charter. And whereas Maryland Code General Provisions, Section 5-807, requires each municipal corporation to enact provisions equivalent to the provisions applicable to state officials to govern the public ethics of local officials related to conflicts of interest, financial disclosure, and lobbying. Whereas the mayor and council find that amendments to Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury City Code are desirable to update and clarify ethics provisions governing officials and employees of the city and to bring them in accord with the Maryland Public Ethic Laws, which are found in Maryland Code General Provisions, Article Section 5-801. Whereas pursuant to Section 2.0403OE of the Salisbury City Code, the mayor and council may amend such Chapter 2.04 subject to review and recommendation of the City Ethics Commission with respect to any such amendment. Whereas on September 13th of 2022, the City Ethics Commission, in accordance with the provisions of Section 2.0403OE of the Salisbury City Code, convened in public session to review the amendments of Chapter 2.04 set forth herein and to hear public comment, if any, with respect to such amendments. Whereas at the conclusion of the September 13th meeting of the City Ethics Commission, the Ethics Commission by unanimous vote recommended the mayor and council approve for passage amendments to Chapter 2.04 set forth in this ordinance. And whereas prior to the September 13th, 2022, meeting of the City Ethics Commission, the city, through its city solicitor, provided a copy of the amendments up to Chapter 2.04 set forth in this ordinance to the Maryland State Ethics Commission for review to ensure compliance with the requirements of the Maryland Public Ethics Law as amended. And whereas mayor and council have determined that the amendments to this Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury City Code set forth below shall be adopted as set forth herein, and those changes are highlighted in the bold and underlying language, which again, as we discussed in work session, is modeled based upon the state law and taken right from COMAR, which is the Code of Maryland Regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Questions or comments?
None.
None? Michelle? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2741 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2741 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. That concludes the items on the agenda today. And if there are no further comments from the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, Rick.